I'm going to try moving up the Super City Planning and Zoning Commission for January 3rd, 2012 to order. And if you will all please rise then join me in the pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Lundy, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you call the floor, please?
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Lundy?
Present.
Commissioner Coats?
Present.
Commissioner Clements?
Present.
Commissioner Seibel? Commissioner Parrot? Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we do have a quorum, and we hope that Commissioner...
I'm sorry, we can't hear a thing you're saying.
The microphones are not working?
These are supposed to be working. Can you hear anything close this close?
Is that any better? Can you hear me? No. Hmm. Well, uh...
Can our technical...
I work project!
Can the technical experts crank it up a little bit in the back?
Perhaps, but I will speak a little louder.
Wayne, can you check this? Maybe she can't hear us either.
That's possible.
We'll turn them up, but if we turn them up too much, then we just get feedback in the room, so...
If you go like this, and we'll be too...
Like that? Yes. All right. Would you like us to look at the agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes to make to the agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve it as it's written.
So move.
Is there seconds?
One second.
All those in favor of the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. If you all have a chance to look at the minutes for the previous meeting. Are there any corrections or changes? I have one proposed change on page three of the minutes in the second paragraph that begins, "Therefore, much discussion about the problems of Alabama Street with the suggestion that the Planning and Zoning Commission," and I would like you to change it to read,[191.81][191.81]"feature a discussion of the problems at a future community forum segment of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with town staff and perhaps a traffic engineer."
Could you write that down for me?
I will give you my copy.
I agree with that. That's more in line with what actually occurred in the dialogue.
I think so. Is there any other proposed changes? Could someone give me a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I approve. Go ahead, Chief.
I will be approve the minutes, the minutes with the amendment that you added.
One second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Then, all those in favor of the minutes being approved as altered, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. There being no other business, we'll move directly to a public hearing. This is a request for a conditional use permit, CU 11-04. It would allow a perch on a park or land zone residential A. The address is 1729 Alabama Street, and the applicant is St. Francis Newman Center Parish. This commission will serve as the hearing board, and I, as chairperson, will be the presiding author. This case involves an application for a conditional use permit. Have any of the members of this hearing board had any ex parte communication about this matter prior to this meeting?
No.
That being the case, would all those who would like to testify on the matter of this conditional use permit, please come forward to be sworn in. You will not be allowed to speak in the matter unless you are sworn in, but being sworn in does not obligate you to speak.
She's having a public hearing. I'm glad we're doing that. If you want to speak...
I understand that, but I mean, what... She must speak here, and she has a... Someone may be here.
Are other people in the audience also having difficulty hearing me?
I can hear that she's talking, but I don't know what she's saying. Okay, Tommy is... These are wireless headphones. She's... He needs a big phone. We hand you a big phone. But maybe you guys can sit closer up.
I would invite you to move your chairs forward, because I'm trying to speak as loudly as I can, and other people in the audience apparently can hear me. So why don't you move your chairs forward into this central area? There's no reason you couldn't sit there.
I apologize, because the counting system is just going to us, so there's limitations.
If anyone else would like to move forward so they could hear more easily?
Yeah.
Does that help you?
Yeah.
Oh, good, I'm so glad. Okay. Would you like to be sworn in to testify in this matter? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the matter of this conditional use permit? Please come forward. Okay? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
She may not have heard the statement, but unless they are sworn in, they cannot give testimony. You might want to repeat that.
Okay. You understand that. Okay, very good. I state your full name.
I, Dr. Benjamin Girard.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I am about to give...
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give...
...will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth...
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
...on penalty of perjury.
On penalty of perjury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a conditional use permit hearing, and it permits uses that are not allowed by right in the land as code. The applicant has the burdened proof for all four findings. And I hope that it's been explained to you, Dr. Girard, that you will be requested in your testimony to provide proof for those four findings. Are you adequately prepared and informed about that? Very good. The Planning and Zoning Commission may approve, modify, with reasonable requirements, or deny this conditional use. And the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the final decision in this, but it is subject to appeal with the city council if anyone is unsatisfied with our decision. Okay, I note that Commissioner Seibel has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I should note as well that I've had no ex parte communication regarding the hearing.
Thank you for noting that. Okay, could we please have the staff report?
Forgive my voice, it's going fast.
Oh dear.
The hearing tonight is for a conditional use permit application for St. Francis Newman Center Parish. They would like to develop some vacant property behind the Montessori School off of Alabama Street. That's the Montessori School, and there's St. Mary's Spirituality Center. This is the property that Newman Center would like to, is proposing to develop. It is a residential A. Surrounding the property is all residential A except for this little piece right here, which is outside the city limits, so it's not zoned. The current... Excuse me. The current location is about six blocks away in the same residential A zone, and the church here is of religious use in that residential A zone. I just wanted to clarify that we do have other religious assemblies in that residential A zone. The reason for the conditional use is to develop a religious assembly or a church in a residential A zone. It is a subject for conditional use rather than allowed by right. The big issue that has been encountered with this particular permit or this application is the traffic congestion on Alabama Street, something that we spoke about last commission meeting. The traffic study that was done by the church in 2010 before they submitted, or when they were in a process of submitting their original conditional use permit application for this property, showed that the intersection of 180 and Alabama Street would undergo additional traffic volume, and something would need to be done about that. Also, it was recommended that the Hill Street and Alabama have a four-way stop, and that has been taken care of by the city already, and that the Mississippi extension be utilized into the property so that... That's, that would be Mississippi Street coming in here from the western edge and going into the property. This would be the Alabama Street access for it. Those are issues that the traffic analysis did indicate were problems, and the... That has seemed to be the biggest concern for anyone, including the chief of police, with our... Is that something has to be done about the Alabama and 180 intersection. Originally, the traffic engineer indicated that they should use... I'm just going to run through some of these slides real quick to show you the way the access is on Alabama. It would be there, and it would also serve as access for the Montessori School and St. Mary's as well. So there is an easement for that. This is just some of the vacant land that is being looked at for development. It wasn't a pretty day that day. But I wanted to get back over into... That would be the... This is, this would be the entrance from the Mississippi Street extension through this area here. They have, this church has an easement across there to develop an easement into their property. Their property line starts about where that Jennifer tree is. This is the Mississippi Street and US 180 grade separation or underpass that comes from the campus area, comes down the hill, and right now, there is no extension onto that property, but that was the traffic analysis point of view, that that would help alleviate some of the traffic safety issues. You can see how this area is not well trafficked right now, but we did receive one comment from a person that lives at Kentucky and Hill Street, and that was Ms. McDonald and Mr. Howe. And their concerns were not about the development per se, but about already existing speeding traffic on Hill Street. This Hill Street is also one to deviate a little bit, that we're looking at as part of our walking or pedestrian and bicycle route plan, is making sure that we have access for pedestrians and bicycles along that street, because we see this is a very good way of crossing 180 underneath that underpass. And just as an aside there, Alabama Street intersection here is, I'm sure that some of you know, if you tried to get out of, off of Alabama onto 180, it's, there's a poor sight distance because of the curvature of the road there, and the trees, and the signs, and different things. So the original analysis was for the... Let's see. This is, this is from standing at the site line. It's from the stop bar there, crosswalk of Alabama Street and 180. It's me standing right at the corner of that crosswalk and looking down, wanting to see what I could see, and it is a limited sight area. This is what, what the traffic engineer said that he thought was a good improvement would be to turn this shoulder into a right-hand turn lane, and so that would get all the right-hand turning off of the mains, the main lanes, and turn it up Alabama and make it a little bit safer. When that was proposed through the Department of Transportation, there was some concern that bicyclists use this shoulder as a bike route, or as a bike lane, and that there would be a conflict between bicycles and right turn lane. Their proposal was for this, the lane to be widened out, or the right-of-way be widened here to allow for an additional lane for the right turn lane. The traffic engineer said, "If you do that, your line of sight is going to decrease even more, because you have to move your stop bar back even further, and you're not really changing the safety issue." So what we've done is tried to get together with the Department of Transportation and the city to come to grips with this intersection. Whether or not there is a conditional use permit approved, because it is, as the traffic safety analysis said, it's not a good situation already, whether there's any further development or not. And there's going to be further development up Cottages Sands, and we don't have anything to say about it, because it's out of the city limit. So we want to be proactive and get everybody to sit down and figure out what we can do about that intersection. It's just an unsafe situation. So, anyway, the... Our staff opinion is that the community development department found the application to be complete. Town departments had no objections to the application, and no evidence of fact or public opinion would indicate the application could not meet the required findings, with the following conditions. Improvements to traffic safety at the intersection of US 180 and Alabama Street shall be addressed to the satisfaction of New Mexico DOT and the town of Silver City, and a plan to strongly encourage use of the Mississippi Street extension for ingress to and egress from the proposed site shall be implemented by the applicant. That's not just to say that there's going to be a driveway in, but somehow, a plan for the church to encourage their membership to use that rather than the Alabama Street entrance. It would just be more, more helpful and a safer way of going. We have one other comment from the public that came in since the report went out, and that was from a Gail Green at 1708 North Georgia Street. And she says, "Thanks for the letter about the permit for the land at 1729 Alabama Street for the St. Francis Newman Center Parish. I won't be able to attend, but would vote for it. However, I hope it won't be long before the city widens, repaves, and generally makes the street access safer." So, all the comments that we've been receiving from both McDonald's and the Greens and others from talking last meeting, it's about the safety of that, that street, so...
But they're supportive.
Pardon?
I heard you say they were supportive of the...
She was, she would vote for the proposal. In speaking with Ms. McDonald, she said she didn't have a problem with the proposal, but she got to see the safety on Hill Street addressed before any traffic gets generated, additional traffic gets generated. And she had some very specific solutions to it, stop signs and speed bumps along Hill Street and at Mississippi and Hill. And she had some very specific concerns too about the safety of some of her neighbors when they walk along Hill Street.
Mr. Coats, you referred earlier to the fact that Hill Street is in the bicycle path plan for the city, is that right?
We are working on a bicycle pedestrian routes plan for the city. It's not, it's in a very low draft form right now, but that was one area that we saw as a way to circulate bicycles and pedestrians from one side of 180 to the other.
And sounds like a very good idea, but would that plan also address building additional sidewalks on Hill Street, which I think was one of their concerns?
One of their concerns was that a sidewalk on the north side of Hill Street should be put in. I kind of doubt that the city's going to get to be, to doing that right away. It's not high on their list yet. Once we get the draft proposal, or the routes plan done and approved, then it can go into the planning process. Also, if those vacant lots are ever developed along the north side of Hill Street, that would be the perfect time for those, that sidewalk to be put in, so...
Mr. Coats?
Yes, Mr. Seibel?
Let me begin by saying that I'm really pretty excited about this project with a couple. I mean, we haven't heard the property owner's testimony yet, but...
Speak up, Nick.
All right. Speaking up. My concerns are twofold. One goes back to what we discussed at last month's meeting about the need for... Here, I can use this one. About the need for really some sort of comprehensive plan to address that corridor there along Alabama Street. And as you pointed out, I think this emphasizes again the need to do something proactive there now. So I don't really think that that really has much impact on what our decision tonight will be, certainly won't on mine, but it does, does point out again that we need to do something about that. And I think some of those sight distance issues should be looked at in a comprehensive way with some of the other things that we'd like to address in that corridor. You know, it'd be an opportunity to wrap it all together. So that's one comment I have for the staff. The other question that I have is, I understand the use of Mississippi Street for access across 180. In a lot of ways, it makes a great deal of sense. My only concern with that would be as a bicyclist, that going in one direction on Hill Street's not a very fun ride.
But it is the other way.
Coming from, coming from the university, it's a lot of fun. Going back to the university, not much. I used to live on Hill Street. And having lived there and used that area a lot as a pedestrian and as a bicyclist, it seems like the property that we're talking about tonight presents some real opportunities in terms of access for a bicycle and a pedestrian path that could tie Alabama Street and further up Cottage Sands into that grade separation at Mississippi Street in a friendlier way. And I wonder, have there been any conversations with the applicant on whether they would be interested in granting an easement along those lines, whether that would fit into their plans?
No, no discussions have been.
Okay.
Can you explain a little bit more what you're saying?
Well, I'm primarily thinking, right in here, you know, where we're talking about this extension from Mississippi Street over to where their parking lot's going to be, there's, there's sort of a trail system that already runs in here along where that Mississippi Street right-of-way would theoretically continue along the western boundary of that property. It seems like there might be some opportunities to not develop that as a street, but rather as a pedestrian and bicycling path, because that sort of has a better grade than you come around to Luck Street, and it doesn't have quite the steepness that, that Hill Street has, and it might be a way to tie things down and around to get people through and make a more pleasant and rideable path. So it seems like that might be a conversation we might have. I don't know if that'd be something they'd be interested in, but they're here asking us for something tonight. Maybe we ought to ask them for something in return.
Commissioner Sebel, are you suggesting that they not pave their driveway?
No, I think they absolutely should. I'm just wondering, beyond the portion that they're planning on paving, there's a section that, from what I can tell from their plans, they're not really planning on using that property anyway, because it writes, it's right along their western boundary. I just wonder if they would be open to a trails easement essentially to the town for use of that as a thoroughfare for bicyclists and pedestrians.
In addition to the driveway?
In addition to the driveway. So basically, you know, for that section, that, that extension would, that would be used not just for access to their parking lot, but for bicyclists and pedestrians, but then continuing off to the north beyond where it turns down to their parking lot, there could be, you know, a ramp and a way then for, for a bicycle path to continue on. Probably not developed immediately, but you know, in the longer term, it seems like a real opportunity, and this might be an opportunity to negotiate that.
You're quite right about the informal trail system that's already there. If you walk out there, there's quite a few trails coming up from the Montessori area, so... I will certainly discuss that with them depending on the outcome of this commission meeting.
Mr. Coats, is there some kind of a citizen group that is studying a bicycle and pedestrian plan for the town?
Right. Yeah, we've had a lot of working sessions. We've had open meetings where we've had people giving us suggestions of where they would like to ride, where they would like to walk, where they live, where they go. We've had over 220 responses from people through the high schools and through four or five public meetings. Children's Fiesta was one of them. So we've been doing a lot. It's just, right now, trying to coordinate the on-the-ground map with the pavement plan that's already in place and massaging it to make sure that everything works, that we want to make sure, we want to have it so that when we present it to the council, it's also been vetted again by the community, and so we're going to be doing that as well in the next couple of months, I hope.
Mr. Coats?
Yes.
Better known as Jim.
Some days.
The staff made two recommendations on conditions. The first reads, "Improvements to traffic safety at the intersection of US 180 and Alabama Street shall be addressed to the satisfaction of New Mexico Department of Transportation and the town of Silver City." My question, by whom?
That is a big question.
Well, that's why we paid the good bucks to sit up here.
That's right. Originally, it was looked at as if all they had to do was strike, or to change, change the striking to use the shoulder as a right-hand turn lane, it was going to be a relatively easy fix. When the Department of Transportation started talking about widening and then having to make more right-of-way accessibility, that changes the on-the-ground look of things too. The police chief has a whole different scenario, which is if we were to take the outside lane that's currently there and turn it into the right-hand turn lane, and make the inside lane the through lane... lane the through lane, because a block up, it turns into a one-lainer anyway. That, but we still have to negotiate that with the Department of Transportation. We're not, we're not saying, we're not recommending who pays for it or what gets done. We just need to address it to everybody's satisfaction.
I think I also heard you say that, that the need for this is not necessarily significantly affected by this proposed conditional use permit, because there is going to be an increase in use of Alabama Street due to development on Cottage Sand and Bear Mountain Road.
There's gonna be an increase in the use of Alabama Street, yes.
So this is a question that's gonna have to be addressed in the future regardless of what decisions made tonight.
I agree.
Mr. Coats, I'm equally unclear about this particular condition being placed on this permit, because it seems to me, how, how could you make the church responsible for something that involves the town and a state department? And how can you make that, you know, part of the conditions for their getting their permit? They have no control over those entities. They can't dictate the timetable with which these governments would deal with this situation, however much we share the urgency of getting some resolution to that intersection.
Well, the alternative was, or the alternatives were not addressing it at all, which is from the safe, or the traffic studies, wouldn't have been acceptable. Or saying, "The church has to pay for it whatever way we go." And we just, our recommendation is that it gets done. And hopefully, it will get done with a less expensive and more user-friendly thing than moving right-of-ways and trying to tear down walls around people's homes that might be encroaching on the right-of, whatever.
Does, does this condition make the church financially responsible for alterations in the intersection? Surely not.
No. I, I was trying to write it so that it did not. But somebody needs to be responsible for it. And I think that it's the, I'm gonna stick my foot in it here. I think it's the city's responsibility to get the dialogue going because of the public safety and health issue on Alabama Street and that intersection. And we started this conversation last, last month, and that, those, that opinion for recommendation doesn't have to be followed by you as commissioners. But that is the public safety issue for that development, is-
Yeah, it absolutely is, I agree. But the, the public safety issue also exists, creates the granting of any permit or the development of any project on that piece of land, because it's already dangerous without any additional traffic. I think everybody would agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't see how we could tie it to the granting of the conditional use. I, I don't disagree with it. I think it definitely needs to happen before the church goes in there and we have, you know, a lot of additional traffic in the area. But I just don't understand how, what the rationale is for staff tying it to the conditional use permit.
Well, the rationale was, was that it is a recommendation that it needs to be addressed. And before we did much more analysis, the analysis that we did this time, it was looking like the church was going to have to move the right-of-way over based on the, based on the NMDOT standards and what they wanted done with it. And that was back in two thousand and ten, if I'm not correct. We're trying to come up with a middle ground that would address the public safety issue. And maybe it's, we, we as the city planners, the planning commission, need to sit down with the Department of Transportation and law enforcement of this town and Public Works and say, "This is a public hazard, what are we gonna do about it?" And that needs to come before any further development goes in there. But, I mean, I'm speaking not from the department now, but just from me.
Is there any other way that that end could be achieved without putting in a condition on this permit? Is there any other way that the planning and zoning commission could put its weight behind the urgency of the town dealing with this issue with the state without tying it to this conditional use permit?
I don't know. Chair?
Yes?
I have another question for, for Jim. You made some comments earlier in talking about the reasoning behind this condition. And I wonder, is it the thought process behind some of the department that we should be asking the applicant for some sort of financial contribution towards this work? In other words, in many larger communities, there are impact fees for roads and other development that would cover the cost of improvements that need to be made to infrastructure. In Silver City, we don't structure things that way. But is the suggestion here that we should make as a condition some sort of contribution towards this solution?
It has been discussed as a cost-share process. And it's been discussed both with New Mexico DOT, through emails, it's been discussed with the applicant, that, you know, they, they see that something needs to be done, but they don't feel like they're out, they should be obligated for the whole thing. I mean, I, I'm not gonna speak for the church, but there have been discussions of who's gonna pay for this, and how is the city going to take care of it? How is the state gonna take care of it? How, how is the developer gonna take care of it?
Have there been conversations about what that fair share would look like in this instance?
We don't know what the solution is.
So you can't-
So it's hard to tell.
Well, I mean, has anyone said, "Okay, there's X amount of traffic and this will, this development will generate Y amount of additional traffic, so their percentage of the cost for this solution, whatever that cost would be, should be Z?"
Nothing's been discussed in that manner, no.
Okay.
What about like when Brandy and I were in the subdivision?
Speak up, Roger.
There's this new, a relatively new subdivision of Cottage Sand just for Alabama, and I would think that when that big development went on, that this would have been something that had already been talked about. I mean, this isn't a new, you know, this isn't a new issue, and it's not an issue that has been created by the applicant.
Was that the one in two thousand and nine?
Yes.
Approximately, and it was decreased in, in size during the planning process because of the traffic impact? That was before the traffic studies were done. The traffic studies were more proof of the need for, for something to be done.
Right. And if another development were to go in there, let's say, two years from now, would it be fair to the church to add the same, or the church is responsible for all of this future traffic that people are impacted on?
Yeah, because we won't have any say-so past the category line.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions on it, on the conditions. The first one, all of it's vague, you know, improvements, what improvements, so how do they know the costs? Shall be addressed, shall be addressed, I mean, you just discuss it, you know, it's not final. And then to the satisfaction of the Department of Transportation, that's, all of that, to me, seems like it's too vague unless we can get something more specific to be able to put a condition. I don't see how we can possibly put on a condition that's not specific enough that they know how to meet it. And then that kinda, it still goes for the second condition, a plan to strongly encourage use of Mississippi Street extension. Could we get something a little bit more specific than that? Because again, I feel uncomfortable putting on a condition that's so vague that how do you know if you've met it, and how do they know what they have to do to meet it? Is there any way of getting something a little more specific on the second one, or?
I totally agree with your concerns, and I do have an idea about how to solve the second one. And that would be to include in my condition that all the signage for the church has to appear out of the Mississippi outlet. So they can't have any church sign saying, "Here's the entrance on Alabama." That would at least, I think that would add an impact.
The-
In emphasizing that Mississippi entrance is to be the only entrance used by the congregation.
The vagueness of both of those were-
Do it?
To allow the order of the roadworks to come to some agreement before we say, "This is what you gotta do." We can't be, we can't tell the Department of Transportation how they're gonna fix their road. It's gonna be a dance to get them to agree to do something.
Would we try, I suppose, with speculation on that, the same to what can be contemplated and try this problem that can be solved?
Um, and I, the second one was vague, because I didn't wanna tell them what they had to do, or what you had to do. But to, in, in their application, they talked about, "We will have signage out of the parking lot." And to me, the signage isn't as much, isn't as good as having something in the bottom of their church bulletin appearing, "Please use Mississippi entrance every time," you know, whatever, just some other ways of really presenting the need to decrease the Alabama traffic.
Well, I think, at this point, we need to hear from the applicant and hear what they have to say, and let you give a best of these questions before. The applicant, please come forward and introduce yourself by name.
I'm James Gerard, and I'm on the Building Committee of St. Francis Newman Center Parish. I'll just go through, we have these four criteria that you all have, and I would just like to go through them real quick and then answer any questions, if that's all right. First one, will not endanger the public health or safety. St. Francis Newman Center Parish's plans for the property fall within the similar uses of the property that is to the east of us, St. Mary's and the Montessori School. We will have Christian education classes in the afternoon, and we will have church services on Saturday and Sundays. And occasionally, we will have fellowships in the evenings and on the weekends. None of these things endanger the health and safety of the adjacent properties. In regard to Mr. Seibel's question, I think we'd be willing to allow a pedestrian path or bicycle path along the southern border. I think it would have to be right up against our property line, because there's drainage in there, and so you, you wouldn't want it right down in the bottom of that drainage. So, we, we don't see any problem with providing that pedestrian path or, and bicycle path along there. The, we will not, our project will not injure the value of the adjoining or nearby properties. Again, we get back to, our buildings are gonna be similar to what they already have at St. Mary's with the Montessori School. The one thing is, the height of our buildings, by the time we prepare the site, the height of our buildings will not obstruct anyone's view from their houses, whether they're on Hill Street. Basically, we're gonna be down in a hole. So, everybody's gonna look over us. So, and we're, right now, it's raw land. There's a couple of tattered wellhouses that we're gonna take down. We're going to minimize the amount of disruption of the site. There's, it's kind of hard to see in the pictures that Jim took, but the northwest quarter of the property is a hill, a very steep hill. And we are going to be on the eastern side of that hill and then come around the base of that hill. We have no intentions of going up on that hill. So, most people's view, the hill's gonna stay the same the way it is right now. Whereas, will it be in harmony with the area in which it's located? Again, it gets back to, we have a school, and then we'll have church services and the same thing as what is used on St. Mary's and the Montessori. So, we'll have similar traffic coming in and out. We have the Christian education on a couple of weekday periods, about four o'clock in the afternoon to the five thirty in the afternoon. And then we have church on Saturday afternoon and Sunday morning, and then Sunday evening. And will it conform to the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted? From where I understand, the community development, people did not receive any negative comments about our development per se. The only thing I can say, if it gets down to the public health or safety, is that corner at one eighty and Alabama Street. I looked at that corner, and there are state railroad irons in there showing that corner. And then the people that own that property, they go right up to those irons. And those irons are about four feet from the curb. So, we, as a church, cannot do eminent domain and start taking property from other property owners. So, again, it gets back to the New Mexico Department of Traffic or Transportation, so what they wanna do there. And we don't have an unlimited budget, they can't just, we're not Walmart.
Yeah.
You know, they can't just say, "Well, we want you to spend two hundred thousand dollars to pay this person for their property and to put in a full turn lane and signage and everything else." I mean, it's just not gonna happen. That's just, they didn't ask for that subdivision. There's several mobile home subdivisions there where they have a mobile home at every fifty feet. So there's high-density housing there already in about three places on Cottage Sand. So, there's a lot of traffic there that we have no control over, and it's already there. So, we would be willing to help a little bit, but I mean, percentage-wise, you know, count, the LS Mason Bear Mountain Road is being developed with a lot of houses, and that's really, the county should be looking at that to control that, or, or to take care of the thing. Do you all have any specific questions for me? Did I?
Yes, I do. I wanted to ask you, first of all, I think this is a wonderful plan. I think it's a wonderful site- I think it's a wonderful site for your new location for your parish and it keeps it close to your neighborhood and I think that's, that could be a plus for you and I'm delighted that you've come forward with this request. I wonder if you could tell me what kind of signage the church plans to install? You gonna have any sign saying, "Here we are"?
Yes. Well, I assume that we would put one on Alabama Street, but as you were saying previously, you know, if you make it a stipulation that we have to put it on the intersection of Mississippi and Hill Street, then that's what we're gonna have to do. You know, that's, I can understand that.
You could say they have a signage over to the Mississippi entrance and that would, that's where they want more of the traffic to come in.
And I understand that. I mean, we, we have several of our congregation that live right there on Alabama Street. They've said, you know, "This is gonna be great 'cause I can walk to church, but we have all this traffic now." And, and one of them said, "You know, that stop sign doesn't do much. There are people who run that stop sign five or six times a day." I mean, he says, "They know it, they, they live out there." And he said, "So, there's traffic problems that we are not producing or will not produce traffic problems that aren't, they already exist." So, uh, the other thing was, we would put signage in our parking lot to direct people to go, make it easier to go out Mississippi Street simply by having a stop sign placed in the correct point to encourage people to go out that way. Or stop signs, whatever, so.
Would you, I, Jim kind of had an interesting idea.
Who cares?
Would you feel comfortable putting in your first three months of bulletins, just a little thing at the bottom?
Oh, sure. I mean, we could just...
Encourage you to?
We could just leave it in the bulletin.
If that was being a condition, would not bother you?
No, not at all. I mean, that, that would be something, we could just leave it in the bulletin permanently, not, not for three months, but just leave it in there permanently.
How long do you anticipate it will take you, once we grant this permit, should we do so, um, to complete the construction and actually be using the facility?
It's going to be a couple of years with, with the way the economy has been and everything. Our fundraising has slowed down significantly and so it would, I don't see us even starting to build for at least two years.
I'm, uh, I too think this is neat idea, to do this in this location. I have a lot of heartache over this recommended, um, condition, number one. This is, this is something the town of Silver City and Grant County and New Mexico Department of Transportation need to address. I can only assume your willingness to be an active participant in, or catalyst in helping foster these conversations and dialogues to get this taken care of because, uh, to me, this shouldn't fall on the church's shoulders. There's a lot of stuff going on up that road and there's gonna be a lot more stuff going on up that road. And it's not to fall on your shoulders, but I can, I can only imagine or at least hope that you'd be a willing catalyst to help stimulate the dialogue to get this to happen in a two-year period before you hit your church building. Because it's, anything that they do there to improve it is going to improve your situation also.
Yes. I agree with you completely.
I, I do, I, the second condition, um, I'm supportive of, I don't know if that's the correct wording for it, but I think there are things that you can do among the people that's in your church, like the bulletin, like the design of the parking areas. Um, do you have, do you have a copy of the plan to put up on, on the thing right there? You already show, um, ingress and egress on the Mississippi at the other end of the parking lot. And as I understand, you help, you are receptive to the idea of a, of dedicating some space along the southern boundary for a bicycle pathway. There might, just a suggestion, um, the, the ingress and egress on the west side, that road comes into, right into the parking lot. Anything, this is not anything I'm thinking about as a condition, but I come, I've done, I come from a design background. That, anything that you could do in that area, in that parking lot, to improve the drivability and access to the church, rather than winding and twisting through parking spaces, might improve that particular situation and encourage people to use that ingress and egress more than the, than the one to the east, which you see as a clean shot. So, that's just a suggestion, but...
May I go over there and, and point some things out about the topography?
There's a drainage, there's a mount, there's a big hill right here. And then there's a big hill right here and there's a drainage that comes down this way and comes right through here, like that. There's already about a two-foot, maybe three-foot-high earthen dam that's very old, but it's, and it's right in this area right here. So, and then the drainage continues right along through here. So, we plan on putting several rock holding dams to control the water that comes off our parking lots and this drainage right here. So, that's why I was saying we should put the bicycle path right along our property line because it's up above that drainage, four or five feet. Just things like that, so. And we have enough room, we can redesign this to get better flow, that is.
I'll show you exactly what I'm...
Okay.
Not something I'm looking at as a condition, but just from a design perspective, if you were to take this parking lot and swing it up here, it might be possible to help with the drivability more direct, rather than winding through from this hill.
George?
That hill is pretty steep and goes up that way.
George? While you're up there, what if you were to swap the parking from being where it is and being instead along the access off of Alabama Street? I like that for two reasons. One, because it achieves, like, in that area right there, it achieves the thing that you're talking about in terms of...
We, we only own fifty feet here.
Right, but at what point, where is that property?
Here's the problem, if you can drive along...
So I'm saying, in that area right there, where is that pretty square and all that? What? Yeah.
This is a big drainage.
Okay.
If we, if we brought that, we're already gonna have some rock firms to control, uh, water.
The only point I wanted to make was, there are, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat. But, uh, if you wanna encourage traffic to go that way, uh, right now, it's easy to go this way, it's a straight shot. So anything you could do to make this a straight shot, so to speak, by getting rid of this winding round here, to me would help. And your architect could...
We could, yeah, we could move this up, I mean, we own this, so we could move this up here and bring this in over here, so that you have a straight shot like that.
So my point was, here, here's your property alignment here.
It's really close.
So if this parking's here, what if this line of parking just continued, you come all the way down here and then you filled in with a little more parking in this area right here?
This is a cashman basin, I'm using the cashman basin here.
Okay. And those need to be located there.
Yeah, we have an engineer, um, design, uh, cash, be, be...
Right. Because I was thinking, this would achieve Georgia's idea, and it's a good one, about getting a more direct access. But the other thing that personally I would like about having more parking here is I expect that probably, whether you want them to or not, these guys are gonna wind up using some of your parking during the weekdays. And the more parking could have up closer to them, the more shared use that parking would give.
It would require bringing in a lot more dirt and raising all of this up, which would increase the slope of this, which is already pretty, pretty steep. Were there any other questions?
Doctor Gerard, is it still your intention to build the fellowship hall first?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the sanctuary, as you have funding to do so?
Yes, ma'am.
So during that period, with the fellowship hall serving as your principal location, the parking is gonna be quite, the bulk of the parking is gonna be quite far removed from that building, is that correct?
We plan on grading all the parking at the same time, doing all the site preparation at the same time.
I see.
It's just...
So all the parking that's around the buildings would be available?
Yes, ma'am.
From the very beginning? Okay, thank you.
Doctor Gerard? Okay. You mentioned earlier that, okay, but, let, let me begin by saying that we heard a proposal for this development on another, on another site a few months ago. And I had a lot of concerns about that proposal and almost every negative concern I had about that is a positive concern about this, if that makes sense. In other words, there were lots of things I didn't like and most of the things I didn't like about the old one, I really like about this one. So everything from the location to proximity to the university, the way it fits into the neighborhood, I just think that this is a really good fit. And so any criticisms or questions that I have are minor relative to my good feeling about the project as a whole. So I just start that way. I appreciate the, the bicycle and pedestrian easement offer and I hope that that's something that the town will look further into because I think that that could get a lot more use out of that grade separation and make it a nicer spot. I also wonder, um, you mentioned earlier that you thought that the church's contribution percentage-wise to the traffic load at the Alabama-180 intersection would be a small one. And I realize this is not a scientific way to handle this, but if you had to be put on the spot, off the top of your head, come up with that percentage, what, what would you say that that was?
Commissioner Flack, what I think that is a totally unfair question to ask there.
I've never designed a highway or built a road to highway specs, I, and I have no idea of what the costs are for something like that.
Right.
You know, when you're talking, if they start talking about pushing it, the turn lane in five or six feet or eight feet or ten feet, you're talking about eminent domain and paying somebody for their, and they talk about sightlines that went all the way down to the next block and I'm going, that's what the New Mexico Department of Traffic or Transportation is talking about.
Right.
Well, if, if you start talking about an ideal situation, you're talking money has no object.
Right.
And, and I, I've lived here thirty years and I have not seen the state of New Mexico spend a whole lot of money in Silver City.
Right. And my, my question deals less with the percentage of project costs and more with, and, and these would be numbers that would be, I think, fairly easy to get, but I don't have them and apparently nobody else does either, but how much traffic is there? We've got these estimates of the additional traffic that your development will generate. Strictly speaking, in terms of traffic volume, what do you suppose the percentage is that you're gonna be contributing to this? We've got the numbers, but we don't have the numbers now. I mean, I don't have anything to generate the percentage from. I know what they're going to make, but I don't know what's there now.
There's 266 vehicles per hour during the morning peak time. Two seventy-seven during the evening peak. And the traffic engineer estimated fifty trips per hour generated by the church during the evening peak time.
During weekdays.
On weekdays. The rest of it is, you know, that, that's the only comparable we have is the peak times during the PM and AM during weekdays.
And I think you have to keep in mind, this is a church. You only have the maximum traffic on Sunday mornings.
That's right.
And all the other times that the church comes together except for special occasions like weddings or christening or something, the traffic is much less.
So I'm, looking at these numbers, then this would, this would say to me if their afternoon peak on weekdays would be fifty trips per hour that they'd generate. And right now, it's 277, we're talking about somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent of the total burden that's falling on them. Does that look right to everyone here?
About eighteen percent, I think.
Uh, P.
That P, but that's...
But I think this whole discussion is kind of sparse because we all know that there's other additional development that's gonna go in on that same artery. And it would be totally unfair to set any kind of percentage if that's where you're going with this and tie it into a conditional use permit and create this moment in time when we know so well there are gonna be lots of other users who would never contribute to the financial solution. I think this is a burden that falls on government and not on this user or any of the other users in the neighborhood. Wouldn't it be equally just to go to the Montessori School or any of the other, uh, home other communities that you have to contribute to this traffic solution? Exactly right.
Madam Chair, with all due respect, my line of thinking here is informed by, one, my understanding of the subject from my education, but also from my involvement in a project in the town of Silver City that involved potentially creating a substantial amount of additional impact on a street similar to, but in worse shape than Alabama. And having been involved in that negotiation with the town, I kinda know how these things go. And the town's position on that project anyway was, even though there's a lot of development that could potentially happen outside the town limits, we don't have any control over that. We can only address what happens within the town limits. And that's the only possibility that we have as a community to recover this investment in infrastructure that we're going to have to make. And the deal that was nearly struck in that case before the whole thing fell apart, um, was that the developer was going to contribute a certain percentage based on this sort of a formula. And then there was a five or ten-year period during which if there was additional development within the town limits, that they would contribute a set percentage through a formula.
And I wouldn't disagree if this were a developer we were talking about. If we were talking about a for-profit business that was gonna reap the benefit out of that development, that's not, that's not analogous to having a church come into the community. It, it, to me, it's not a comparable situation. And I, I think it's just a very sticky riddle to get into any, uh, if you're thinking of tying a condition for this permit, I, I think that would be an error.
I, I wanna add on to that. Something we always seem to forget to look at is the big picture of the whole town. And when your church moves, because it's, it's grown in size, it's just too big for your current building, you are increasing traffic here, but you're decreasing traffic, allowing to monitor traffic, the same amount of traffic in another spot that is also extremely overwhelmed by the university with really poor parking. And so... And so, you know, sometimes with looking at like a teeter totter, you're kind of evening it out as far as overall benefit to the town. So I think we always have to kind of keep an eye on the fact that we're not just looking at this specific thing, but how it affects sort of like the greater good. And as far as I'm concerned, yes, we would increase in traffic here, but if you encouraged it to be on Mississippi Street, you really, we wouldn't have an overall loss.
Yeah, it is a good point.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the afternoon?
I have, could I ask a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Coach, go ahead.
Have you or your engineers talked about the Alabama Street Access being an egress rather than an ingress, just a one-way out?
No, we haven't. Right now, through the way that St. Mary's and Montessori School have the traffic pattern, the property that we own is an exit, and then there are two other entrances on the property further north on Alabama, and those are entrances. They, so they have kind of a one-way traffic flow. So we could do something like that.
But reading the traffic studies, it appears that the concerns are traffic coming off of 180 onto Alabama and then turning up your access point. If all of it was going in from Mississippi and those people that wanted to go out the other direction, that's not creating the traffic problems that we have.
My only feeling is people come to, come to mass one at a time. In other words, some people come early, some people come right when mass starts, some people come a little bit late. So you have kind of a dribble-in effect, but everybody leaves at the same time. So you really want the exits to go out Mississippi Street because you'd have more of a traffic problem if people exited, everybody exited out onto Alabama Street.
But if you maintained the Mississippi Street as two-way and just had, like Montessori has, that's just an outgo. And they have the other entrances coming through. Was, was there any discussion with Montessori or St. Mary's about you're going to create two-way traffic on that right way that they had part of, you know, they don't use it?
We bought the property, we stipulated that we would allow them to use that exit, that, that access to Alabama Street, that we would give Montessori and St. Mary's an easement onto our driveway. That was as far as it went. We didn't stipulate direction of traffic or anything like that. We didn't think about it at the time, to tell you the truth.
We wanted to think about.
Some are trying to believe if through design changes and through consistent encouragement of its parishioners, to use Mississippi Street as a primary ingress and egress, when people begin to understand through experience that going in and out that way is going to be a lot easier for them, and they'll be able to get home quicker or get to church quicker, then it'll work itself out until such time as the New Mexico Department of Transportation and the town of Silver City and Grant County get their act together and get caught up with the united development that's going to occur along that road. I think the church wants its parishioners to be safe, and they don't want them held up against the church, and they want them to be able to get away from church if they want to. So I think encouragement, consistent encouragement, is using Mississippi Streets as a primary ingress and egress, I think will work itself out.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. George. You may sit down. And since we have no one else for an end, there will be no further testimony on this. Commissioners, I'm kind of a ponder here because really to discuss this matter further, we need an motion. But I want, I want to say upfront, I will not vote for any motion that has condition number one included as a condition.
Madam Chair?
Because I think it's totally unfair to put the burden of this on the church. So if someone is going...
Madam Chair?
Just a second. I'll break it down a little. I think what we need to do is to have a motion that would include the condition number two, possibly with a suggestion about the signage coming on Mississippi and not on Alabama, to further reinforce the, the idea that that's to be used as the major point of coming in and going out. Is that what you're prepared to propose, Commissioner Lundy?
Yes.
Then by all means, lay your motion on me.
Well, if you, I was going to make a motion, so if you've got a motion...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I may have an amendment to it. I was born, yes.
But I also, I mean, it doesn't bother me to have some dialogue about where we're headed, and I agree also, I can't buy into condition number one. And I've got some words here that maybe we can massage a little bit that might help with number two. But anyway, I'm in. Well, we, planning is under the commission, approve the conditional use permit, CU 11-04. And this conditional use permit does meet all four findings about not endangering the public health or safety, not injuring value of a joint or nearby properties, will be in harmony with where it is located, and will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. And that this conditional use permit also containing the following condition. And I'm open to, I'm open to misogyny in this a little bit. The church will consistently encourage its parishioners through design, signing, and communications to use Mississippi Street extension as the primary ingress and egress for all church activities.
I might suggest signage rather than framing.
Signage. Well, okay, fine.
Rather than that, but we'll do. So, second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Now that it's been moved and seconded, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion to really minor additional conditions. One, I'd like to take the parish up on their offer to grant pedestrian and bicycle easement along the southern boundary of their property. I'd like to incorporate that in the motion as well. I would also like for the parish to agree to appoint a representative to the Alabama Street Corrid or Study Task Force to be actively involved in the meetings of that task force when it should be created.
And you want that to be a condition of granting the permit?
I do.
That they appoint someone? Is there a second for the amendment? I'll second your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And is there any discussion on the amendment?
There are two parts, correct?
Two parts.
One part had to do with the dedication of easement for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and the second part having to do with appointing a representative from the church to participate in the study group.
Alabama Street Study.
Alabama Street Study.
Yes.
Just for clarification.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Coach?
Can I ask for clarification as to the establishment of that task force or study group?
Well, we've discussed it on several occasions. I hope that that will be forthcoming. Obviously, if the town elects not to study the Alabama Street Task Force, then there will be no reason for that particular provision. It only comes into effect should such a task force be created.
Okay, thank you. So in other words, it's be a part of the catalyst to get the change done.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Are we in discussion? I guess I'd like to clarify a little bit. First, on that number three condition, that we need to contact the church with that task force, they should not have to keep checking on that. The second one is, I guess I have a little bit of a question. Them having an easement for biking and pedestrians along their southern border, does that open the church to lawsuits if somebody hurts themselves biking there? And is that a problem for us putting that condition on them? I don't know the legals.
I don't know.
But if it does, I think that's kind of bad for us to ask them to do something that would open the gateway for them to have a problem. I don't know what the law would be.
I am not clear on that either. We can discuss that with the attorney. It might be that since it's been offered and we're still in the process of developing that route plan, maybe it wouldn't necessarily need to be a condition, but it could be a continuing discussion if some of that, those details worked out. Does that work for you, Nick?
All right.
I mean, it's certainly, the gemstone is there.
Right.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Clemens has raised a serious concern, and we should take it into account. It should be patently obvious that what we're really looking for here is for the church to be very participatory in both the, the idea of the pedestrian and bicycle pathways through the property which leave already floorboard. And objection to in principle, we obviously need to check with our attorneys. I think the thing to do would be to vote against this amendment if you share Commissioner Clemens's concerns about the legality that it might impose on the church, the legal liabilities.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's a valid concern. I would point out that over most of the property that this easement was taken, there's already an access easement for the school and for St. Mary's. And I think it's highly likely, in fact, that students at Montessori School would be using that as both pedestrian and bicycle access to get to school as it is now, which I realize is not quite the same as an access for the general public, but I think represents many of the same liability hazards that they may face. That having been said, I'm really interested in having something official down that there will be some sort of task force in theory, and that it already has members, because I'm really interested in moving that forward. And so in the interest of making that condition make it into this decision, I'm willing to amend my motion to amend to remove that first, that first one, so the second one stays.
Essentially making it, I guess it could be considered a friendly amendment to the amendment.
If that's all right with my second, that is.
So it's your second proof. So how does your amendment now read?
My amendment now reads essentially adding a second, second condition to the decision, asking or instructing the parish to appoint a representative to the Alabama Street Study Task Force when that task force is created.
Very good. Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment? I vote in favor of the amendment. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The amendment carries. Now we can vote on the motion. And the motion is, which contains the amendment now, and it is for approval of the conditional use permit with the condition number two as led by Commissioner Lundy and the amendment. Okay, let's have a vote on this motion, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Coach?
Aye.
Commissioner Clemens?
Aye.
Commissioner Sable?
Aye.
The motion carries, and the conditional use permit is granted. Let me just find my agenda. Okay. I see we have no new visits, and we have no community form. Do we have any reports from staff tonight?
I have one little thing, just, you probably already know that I'll be retiring on February 3rd, so this is my last meeting, and I just wanted to say...
You what?
Retire on February 3rd. And I just wanted to say what, amazingly, educational experience it has been working with all of you, and as well as a pleasure. Thank you.
So then you will be so nice.
Thank you.
You are a very talented planner, and you've always provided us with outstandingly accurate minutes, and all of your documents were really exceptional. I salute you, and I welcome you to the Corps of Retireers, a different level. So I wish you well, and we certainly have enjoyed knowing you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think that the last community development staff person that, that left the department then applied to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do you see that in your future?
No. Probably not.
Are you moving to Green Bay, Wisconsin?
Absolutely not. Not going anywhere near that, that state again.
Okay. Are there any reports from the commissioners? Do we have any community input? On anything at all? Please come forward, state your name, and tell us what you have on your mind.
My name is Star Belsky. Some of you know me as Mrs. Gelato. Little plug there. I just want to comment on the, you know, the determination you all had to make, just a couple of thoughts. Number one, I live in that neighborhood. I walk exactly where all those roads are. Just some things to consider. Number one, I think you're going to need to put a stop sign in up at the top of Hill Street for those people who'd be coming to church off of there. Or a stop sign somewhere. That the curve, when you're coming along Mississippi and you get to the end of that street and then you make that right onto Hill and/or go straight ahead into the church parking lot, is kind of blind. So please bear that in mind. Another reason why you need to bear that in mind is at a certain time of year, the glare around the spring and fall when you're heading due west is, is pretty intense, and that's just walking, so if people are driving. Another comment, and I don't mean this to sound antagonistic. I understand, Commissioner, where you're coming from is the fact that this is not a Walmart, it's not a major development. This will be adding, what was it, the ballpark estimate, 50 cars per hour during the periods of usage. Just bear in mind, one of the periods of usage is going to be from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the afternoon for the programs for the kids and stuff. That's also a prime time in that neighborhood for traffic, let me assure you. So it is not just a matter of, of, you know, the usage of this site, which I have no problem with, although I love the open land there, but, you know, you've got to make room for other things as well. And you're right, this won't really interfere with a lot of people's views of things. But a car, if a car is a car, whether or not somebody is taking their kids to an afternoon church program, or whether they're going over to Walmart or driving over to a mega-development. So that does need to be borne in mind. I wonder who needs to be talked to to make it happen that NMDOT, but particularly Grant County and the city, including the EMZ or DMZ zone, whatever it is, there has to really ideally be some kind of serious consideration about how much development can go in further out because we have that one now outlet. So that is something that cannot be put off indefinitely, even though the real estate market... market has slowed down right now. You have other issues as well concerning flooding along there and runoff and drainage. So these are things that really have to happen if all of us are going to be responsible for the way this community continues to be. And yeah, I want to tell you that intersection at 180 and Alabama scares you know what out of me. It's bad because people start gaining speed, you know, no matter what that traffic sign says, their head's already out there. And they come tearing around that corner, and I've had a couple of close calls, and trust me, I try to be careful because I like to live in here, and I'd like to live here longer. But anyway, that's what I wanted to share with you. And one last thing, and I doubt anything can be done about this. I rent. The only way that I found out that this was going on in my neighborhood was that somebody else I knew had mentioned it to me and was kind enough to forward that information to me. So as zoning people, what I'd like to remind you of is that the people who rent houses or rent apartments are often never represented and never do know what's going on in their community because they just don't count.
That is a very good point, and I guess you could bring it up to our agenda.
That's a procedural issue.
Mr. Coats, how can the issue of notifying renters who live in a neighborhood about developments, how could that be addressed?
Well, we only have a list of those properties, you know, the owners of the properties through the county. We could, I guess, find out from utilities if they would give us the list of people who have, that could create some additional workload from a department that I have no control over.
Do you want to add to the letter that you sent out to the property owners, a request that if you are an absentee owner, that you please notify tenants who might be living in...
That's a good point.
That's a good suggestion.
Here, for instance, I rent from Smith Realty. The property owners are God knows where. I don't know who that letter went to, whether it went to Smith, because Smith has just been managing the property, or it got sent off to Idaho or wherever these folks are. I don't even know.
It's more like a tax rule, so it goes to the owner.
Right.
Thanks. It'd be lovely if, you know, you could tap into the database of the power companies, but I also understand that there's only so much else I can do.
But I have to say that we also, also signs posted, and there are legal notices in the paper about all these meetings, so it's not like we don't notify anybody but the owner.
Where is the sign? Where is the sign?
The sign is on Alabama Street, right at the entrance that we were talking about.
Obviously, I walked up there. Last time I walked up there, it was abandoned furniture.
And we got a sign. We've been there for several weeks.
Like the corner of Alabama Street, the east strand entrance into the property.
Okay. I'm just curious, how far in advance of a hearing are those things posted?
The signs are posted at least 15 days in front of the hearing.
Obviously, I haven't walked up there lately. All right, well, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening and doing very much about that stop sign. I think it's going to be needed.
You may be interested to know that we do have a plan to discuss this whole Alabama traffic situation. We had discussed it at our last month's meeting, and we're planning to have a community forum on it. And do we have a date for that yet? And what is the, what's the contingency that we're waiting to happen till we can schedule?
We need to be able to pull the New Mexico Department of Transportation into the discussion.
All right.
Need them to come out and take a look at the situation, and we can invite them to whenever we can put it together. But they are the players because they own the highway.
Yeah. Do we have any idea what our schedule is like for next month, because are they having agenda?
There are two zone change requests. That's all I know of. That's all there will be as far as public hearings.
Okay. Then is there any reasonable thing we might...
We can invite them, but I'm hoping that they can come take a look and have preliminary discussions about it before we invite them to come and make a presentation.
I see. And when will that happen?
I don't know. I've been trying to get a hold of the safety engineer for two weeks.
Oh, boy. It's been a rough two weeks, though.
Yeah, it has been a rough two weeks. Well, please persist and give us a report next month on when we can schedule it, because I really feel this is an urgent issue for the community. Please watch the newspapers. They do announce their meetings, and we can make sure that the announcement for this community forum will be made in advance. You can also pick it up on the CATS television and find out...
In the town website.
In the town website and find out when that discussion will be out, and I hope you'll all come back and take pride in it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to point out to you, Star, you're known in the downtown community for your ample free time.
This is a new friend, George.
But I'll point out to you that one of the things I'm hoping will come out of this is that there'll be a task force and a group that will look at not just the immediate intersection, but that whole Alabama Street corridor, that will really look at ways to improve traffic and the livability of that corridor in general. And if you don't have time to serve on that yourself, I certainly understand, but maybe you know some neighbors, some other folks there that might be good participants in that process.
If I'm kept in the loop, I can think we could be a part of it.
I know that this is a real concern of a lot of people in that neighborhood, and as this process moves forward, I hope that they will become engaged because if we're ever going to have a crack at ever solving this problem, this is probably our chance.
And I think if a lot of people chose to turn out when we do have this community forum on Alabama Street, it might impress New Mexico DOT.
And the town.
That, and the town, that we're serious about this, and it's an important issue for us. It might help, you know, light a fire in them.
The community department of the department is also encouraging residents of that area or just residents of the town to send us letters about those close calls or problems that we have at that intersection, and we'll compile them and present them to NMDOT.
Okay. That's good to know, too. I'll share that with the people I know. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any additional community input?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I missed the, I let pass the reports from commission section. I know I said something about this last month, but I'll say it again because right now it's Tuesday, the 3rd of January. Next Tuesday, the 10th of January, is filing day for town council in the Town of Silver City. 100% of the Town of Silver City gets to vote for mayor. 75% of the Town of Silver City will get to vote for their town councillor in the election, which will be held in March. And if you've ever thought about running for public office, now would be a good time to think about it more seriously because whether you win or lose, having candidates in the process is an opportunity to bring to light issues and concerns that are out there that might not otherwise be heard. And I'll point out especially that in District 2, which includes the area that we talked about in this application tonight, the incumbent councillor has announced that he will not be running for reelection, so that will be an open seat. And having served on the town council, it's a challenging but tremendously rewarding opportunity to serve your community, and I hope that everyone in Silver City will think strongly about this opportunity that's being presented to them next Tuesday. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then could I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meaning we adjourn.